Commissioner Mirabella made the motion and Commissioner Palmary Mueded made the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all right, meeting is adjourned. Clerk, do you need time or can we go right in?
Chair, we can go directly into the regular meeting if you wish.
Okay, great. We'll just wait a moment for those who are leaving to leave. Lila? Lila? Lila, I mean, I'm sorry. Lila? We'd like to take a picture with you, if you don't mind. Come on, everybody. That's right. Okay. Thanks so much. Okay, so now we can move on with our regular meeting. So at this time, I'll call this meeting to order. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly, Chair. Commissioner Baker?
Here.
Commissioner Garrettson?
Here.
Commissioner Granados?
Um, here.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Here.
Commissioner Leon? Commissioner Mirabella?
Present.
Commissioner Palmary Mueded?
Here.
Vice Chair Hudak?
Present.
Chair Williams?
Here.
Chair, you have eight commissioners present for the regular meeting.
Thank you. Would you now please lead us in the prayer and salute to the flag?
Humbly, we ask God, giver of peace and lover of charity, to give the entire family of nations true agreement with his will, and to grant the light of his spirit on all who work for justice and peace. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Clerk, would you please read the statement of compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act?
The Chair wishes to announce that pursuant to the requirements of New Jersey Statute Statute Title 10, Chapter 4, Section 10 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting, the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Union has been given by mailing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2022, along with periodic changes necessitated by circumstance to the newspapers circulating within the County of Union who are designated to receive such notice, and by posting the annual meeting schedule for the year 2022 in the Administration Building, and further by filing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2022 with the Office of the County Clerk.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the communications?
So moved by me, Chair.
Second?
Okay, moved by Commissioner Mirabella, seconded by Commissioner Kowalski. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Baker?
Aye.
Commissioner Garrettson?
Yes.
Commissioner Granados?
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yes.
Commissioner Mirabella?
Aye.
Commissioner Palmary Mueded?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hudak?
Aye.
And Chair Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner, there are eight votes in the affirmative on the communications?
Thank you. Next, we have the approval of minutes. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the following dates? January 20th, 2022, Agenda and Regular; February 3rd, Agenda and Regular; and the Executive Session for February 3rd and February 17th, Agenda and Regular. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Kowalski, seconded by Vice Chair Hudak. All right. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Baker?
Aye.
Commissioner Garrettson?
Yes.
Commissioner Granados?
Aye. To all, with the exception of January 20th Agenda and Regular Meeting.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yes.
Commissioner Mirabella?
Aide all.
Commissioner Palmary Mueded?
Aide all, with the exception of the Thursday, January 20th Agenda Setting and Regular Meeting.
Vice Chair Hudak?
Aide all.
And Chair Williams?
Aide all.
Chair, you have eight votes in the affirmative on all resolutions, with the exception of the January 20th Agenda and Regular, where you have six votes in the affirmative and two abstentions.
Thanks so much. Tonight, we have an ordinance for first reading. Clerk, would you please read the ordinance by title?
Ordinance number 837-2022, Refunding Bond Ordinance, Providing for the Refunding of $35,375,000 Aggregate Principal Amount of Outstanding Bonds of the County of the Union, State of New Jersey, Appropriating a Sum Not Exceeding $35 Million to Pay the Costs Thereof and Authorizing the Issuance of Not Exceeding $35 Million in the Aggregate Principal Amount of Refunding Bonds of Said County to Finance Such Appropriations.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Commissioner Granados, our Fiscal Committee Chair, to please move ordinance 837-2022 for first reading.
Thank you, Chair. As Fiscal Chair, move ordinance number 837-2022 for first reading and authorize the Clerk of the Board to advertise same in accordance with the law. The public hearing will be scheduled on April 7th, 2022.
May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, that was seconded. The motion was made by Commissioner Granados and seconded by Commissioner Mirabella. Would you please call the roll, Clerk?
Commissioner Baker?
Aye.
Commissioner Garrettson?
Yes.
Commissioner Granados?
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yes.
Commissioner Mirabella?
Aye.
Commissioner Palmary Mueded?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hudak?
Aye.
And Chair Williams?
Aye.
Chair, you have eight votes in the affirmative on the introduction of ordinance 837-2022.
Thank you. Tonight's meeting is now open for the public, open to the public, for the purpose of commenting on resolutions being offered for adoption and/or on any governmental issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern. When you come up, please state your name and town of residence for the record, and if you're speaking on a specific agenda item, please note the resolution number to which you're referring, and also please adhere to the five-minute time limit. Thank you. Meeting is now open.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Board and Dr. Garrettson, Bruce Patterson, Garwood, New Jersey. First, to the reservoir. I mean, I do look forward to the rejuvenation of the reservoir, and I hope it actually is for a passive park activity, not an active park activity. You're also introducing an ordinance 832-2022 for $35 Million. We had the clerk read the wording. It was a lot of words that really said nothing, but I mean, could you just give me an overview of what that ordinance is about, so we can speak on it next time when it's here for approval? General comments. I went to a UCIA meeting, and I asked about the status of the projects, you know, that the UCIA is doing, and the Director actually gave a rundown of four projects. I was hoping that the Director would talk about the Union County Government Complex, because I figured that was what the Improvement Authority is handling, yet I didn't hear any comment about that. So my question to the county is, what happened to the Union County Government Complex that was sued and is being appealed, and all of a sudden now it's off the radar of the Improvement Authority? So that's really strange. Also, from what I understand, I guess the solar program pretty much went bust that the county had, and at the Improvement Authority meeting, you know, talked about refunding and GATs and things like that, and I'm just wondering, is the guarantee that the county gave, so I guess the guarantee is now going to be picking up the cost, and I'm just wondering, how much are the taxpayers on the hook for this? Additionally, I'll tell you, at that meeting, it was only about 15 minutes long, which was amazing, because nobody's there. I don't even know if we have an Improvement Authority anymore. I talked to Attorney Mencello, I questioned him. He says that, yes, the county can be funding it, and also it can be at a county venue, a county building, and yet there is no county employees. I mean, there is no improvement employees. So my question is, it's nothing but county, 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 county. So I mean, there is no Improvement Authority to me. I mean, somebody's going to have to convince me. You know, they gutted it, and the only person left is the Director, and she actually works for the county. So I'm going to really wonder about this Improvement Authority moving forward and the disaster that's happening. Attorney Mencello, I guess he's covering his buns, you know, saying that, oh yeah, it is an Improvement Authority, but I guess he's on the gravy train, so he's not going to say otherwise. And it was at the end when somebody online, one of the Board of Justiz, said, oh yeah, the Director is doing great, streamlined and efficient, the UCIA. I mean, but you know, right now it's bringing down lawsuits, there's nobody there. I don't know who this board member was, but I'll tell you, he should have his head checked, I guess. I don't know, quality is strange. Also, the county budget hearings. I went to the county budget hearings, as you know, and thank you very much for discussing it. The star of the budget hearings, you know, and I've mentioned this before, as I've gone to so many other budget hearings for about 10, 15 years, but the star was Commissioner Baker. He was a guy, he asked a lot of questions, it was really great, and to tell you the truth, most of them were financial questions. For some reason, I mean, we're talking about a half a billion dollar budget, nobody asks any financial questions. Mr. Baker, thank you very much for doing that. Previously, there was another counselor, I mean, a commissioner, that did ask financial questions a different year, and I said, you know what, they're probably going to tell you, don't ask financial questions anymore, so they're probably going to do the same thing for you, and you know, next year, I don't know what to say. The reference to CARES Act money, looking at the rundown of what the expenditures are, there's a company called MV Strategies LLC. It was formed April 2020, and that company actually forwarded to each of the commissioners $83,000 each, totaling three-quarters of a million dollars using the federal CARES Act funding. This is, meanwhile, 150,000 people from the budget hearing were unemployed in the county, and each commissioner got $83,000. The question is, I mean, how come you didn't gladly say, hey, I'm getting $83,000 each out of the CARES Act money? You're awful quiet. It had to be researched and analyzed to find this out. Who is MV Strategies?
Thank you, Mr. Patterson, your time is up.
Thank you very much, I'd like the answers.
Thank you. Let me just say, with regard to the ordinance 837-2022, we're going to hold off on responding to that. There's a public hearing at our next meeting. The other questions that you had, one was regarding the UCIA, and the last question about some money that we certainly have not received, the county manager will respond. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I wasn't sure around an IA meeting, but as for the building, it is in court, as I'm sure the constituent is aware, and as for this $83,000, I'm not sure, but no commissioner got $83,000 each to spend. MV Strategies was part of our COVID response team. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public? Okay. I see none. So at this point, hold on one second. Seeing none, I'm going to ask for a motion to adopt, oh gosh, let's find all the numbers. Actually, yeah, I'm going to ask for a motion to adopt all the resolutions. Jimmy, could you give us the numbers?
Certainly, Chair. The resolutions for adoption this evening is 2022-236 through 2022-278.
Okay, so may I have a motion?
I'll make, never mind. Somebody spoke before me. I'll just second it.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Palmary Mueded, seconded by Commissioner Baker. Would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Commissioner Baker?
Aye.
Commissioner Garrettson?
Yes.
Commissioner Granados?
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yes.
Commissioner Mirabella?
Aye.
Commissioner Palmary Mueded?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hudak?
Aye.
And Chair Williams?
Aye.
Chair, you have eight votes in the affirmative on all resolutions?
Okay. We now come to Commissioner Reports. I'll start at my far left. Commissioner Dr. Garrettson?
Yes, thank you so much. So as we continue to be in March, it's Women's History Month, and it has been just such a delightful time to see so many amazing programs to honor women, not only women of strength, but women from so many different walks of life, and I'm just so excited to continue to participate in a number of different programs going forward. Also excited to recognize that Friday evening, tomorrow, there'll be a program that the county will be sponsoring for Women's History Month, and I hope all that are available are able to participate. Those are my comments for this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Dr. Garrettson. Commissioner Granados?
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, everyone. As we're all well aware, during the past month, the ongoing conflict in Ukraine has uprooted families. As of this week, more than 3.7 million refugees have left Ukraine for neighboring European nations, while an estimated 6.5 million people have been displaced within the country. Many of these people are without access to basic necessities. To support those in need, the Union County Board of County Commissioners and the Union County Prosecutor's Office have partnered to organize a countywide donation drive for the people of Ukraine. Donation boxes have been placed in the lobbies of Union County Law Enforcement Agencies, totaling 24 locations in all. For this ongoing effort, members of the public are invited to bring donations of first aid supplies, toiletries, flashlights, blankets, batteries, clothing, shoes, diapers, formula, and more to these locations. The program will run for the foreseeable future as long as continued aid is needed. This donation drive is made possible through partnership with law enforcement agencies throughout the county and local Polish and Ukrainian organizations. Union County is proud to support the international effort to aid Ukraine, and we encourage residents to help ensure that life-sustaining emergency supplies reach those in desperate need of assistance. We're immensely grateful to the municipal and county-level police chiefs and directors within Union County for opening their agencies to this initiative, and we support any effort allowing us all to work together in support of the Ukrainian people. Thank you very much, Chair.
You're very welcome. Commissioner Palmary Mueded?
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, everyone. As Director Graziano had mentioned earlier, we do have many recycling events that are coming up within the next couple of months. We hold many paper shredding events throughout the year. Our next two will be held this weekend from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM on Saturday, March 26th, and Sunday, March 27th, at the UC Vo-Tech Campus located at 1776 Raridan Road in Scotch Plains. Our next household hazardous waste, ooh, tongue twisters today, our next household hazardous waste disposal is scheduled for April 9th from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the Cranford Campus of Union County College located at 1033 Springfield Avenue. Residents can take advantage of disposing aerosol cans, batteries, pool chemicals, and more. Every first Thursday and every third Saturday of the month is when residents can participate in the Union County Scrap Metal Recycling Program. The next two events are scheduled for April 7th and April 16th, and residents can recycle appliances, filing cabinets, and more. Locations are in Raway and in Cranford. And as our Director mentioned, beginning May 4th, New Jersey will have a bag ban, and stores and restaurants will no longer be utilizing plastic bags, but I think we'll know more about that at our next meeting. We'll learn a little bit more. But for any of this information, you can log on to ucnj.org/recycling. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Kowalski?
Thank you, Chairman. There was mention made of Union County students who were here earlier today, but I'd just like to add my comments that they are just such outstanding people who have made the effort to get to Union County College and find the help that they need to move forward in their careers along a broad range of subjects. So Dr. Siegel is still here, so thank you. Please convey our regards to Dr. McMenamin and the rest of the staff. We have a senior arts, senior citizens' art show coming up. We haven't done it during the pandemic, so we're happy to be coming back with the Senior Citizens' Art Show, and we invite people who are age 60 and up to enter. This year, we'll be at a new venue, the Trailside Nature and Science Center located in the Watchung Reservation. It's coordinated by our Office of Cultural and Heritage Affairs, and it will open on April 28th and close with a reception on May 11th. And the deadline to register is midnight on Thursday, April 21st. So the exhibit is open to both professional and non-professional artists at all levels of experience. The entries must be original works completed within the last three years, and you must register online, so you can find complete instructions for doing that at ucnj.org/seniorart. The art will be judged by professional artists, and there will be separate awards for both for professionals and non-professionals, and the first-place winners will go on to the state level at the New Jersey Senior Citizens' Art Show. So for any seniors who want to enter but do not have internet access, or have a friend or relative who can help them with that, they can call for assistance at 908-558-2552. That's the Union County Office of Cultural and Heritage Affairs. So I always look forward to the show. It's amazing to see the talent that our seniors show. Many people have had other careers, and once they retire, they find that they have an opportunity to really let this talent blossom. So it's a wonderful show, and I invite you all to come and see it. Thank you, Chair.
You're very welcome. Commissioner Baker?
Thank you. I should have had some water. Thank you, Chair. I just want to remind everyone that next Wednesday, March 30th, at 10:00 AM, we will thank you. Just one minute.
Timeout.
Yeah. That we will be hosting a job fair in cooperation with Walgreens at the Warneaco Sports Center in Warneaco Park. Walgreens has many positions that are available, and I encourage job seekers to attend and find, if you want to find out more about any of these opportunities with this leading company, it certainly is one of the leading retail companies in the country, to register, visit the county's website or online at W, not W, I'm sorry, ucnj, I should know that for all those years, ucnj.org/jobfair to register for this event. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Baker. Commissioner Mirabella?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As everyone knows, we're really excited to welcome back the St. Patrick's Day Parade, postponed from a couple of weeks ago, but taking place this Saturday, March 26th. It's another sign that spring's on the way and that we enjoy one of our favorite community events altogether. The parade, as usual, will take place and kick off at 1:00 sharp on Morris Avenue in Union Township. The marchers will go east on Morris Avenue, turn at Stuyvesant Avenue, and then proceed to Roosevelt Avenue. My recommendation is that everyone stand by the reviewing stand at the intersection of Morris and Caldwell, where announcers will be and provide details of the marchers. I'd also like to call your attention to the Prosecutor's Office and Union County Police Department will be on site. There will be staff at the corner of Morris and Caldwell during the parade to collect donations, almost as Commissioner Granados mentioned, first aid kits, baby formula, other emergency supplies to help the refugees and the war in the Ukraine. Every essential item is making a difference to someone in need. You can also find donation bins in local law enforcement offices throughout Union County and right here in the lobby of our County Administration Building. I just have two other quick things, Madam Chair, both Union County College-related. I was able to be here earlier, as Commissioner Kowalski mentioned, to at least witness the Board of School estimate, which is our funding mechanism for the Union County College. And I said, we all had a little opportunity, those that were here, had a chance to address some of the students, and I said to them then, it's one of my favorite nights of the year, is when the students come, they talk a little bit about themselves and what they are doing, what they're studying, where they're from, and it was great. And Commissioner Kowalski also mentioned Jamie Siegel's efforts, and she runs a very, very good meeting and did a terrific job. So it's a good night, good for Union County College, and it's great for me to see the students here on site. Also, earlier today, had an opportunity to attend an LGBTQ talk, queer talk, hosted by Union County College, where many faculty, members, and students were able to come together on a Zoom call to have a crucial conversation, an important conversation, about the community and the importance of LGBTQ, the rights, and very proud of my daughter who led that conversation. It's always valuable. She asked a question during the meeting, did anybody learn anything during that hour conversation? And I said that I did. Every time I talk to my daughter, I learn something, and she thinks very subliminal in her teaching. She throws these things out there that resonate with me, and it's important to have these conversations throughout our community and to continuously raise the awareness of acceptance and inclusion in our county. So it doesn't surprise me that Union County College is on the forefront of hosting and enabling those conversations, and it was very proud to participate, and I'll definitely let the other commissioners know when any future talks are being held. And with that, Madam Chair, I'll conclude my comments, but thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Mirabella. Vice Chair Hudak?
Chair Williams, thank you. This month marks the close of the second year of the pandemic. As Union County continues to open up, the Board of Commissioners has remained committed to providing tools needed for our residents to fight the pandemic, and here's an update of ongoing efforts. Three permanent vaccination sites within Union County continue to operate, and they are located at Downs Hall at Kane University in Union, Warneaco Sports Center in Roseville, and Plainfield High School. The County Mobile Operations Unit is scheduling mobile vaccination clinics around the county. We have two clinics scheduled for the upcoming dates of March 27th in Elizabeth and March 30th in Roseville Park. Those vaccination clinics also offer COVID-19 saliva testing. Residents who seek regularly scheduled COVID-19 tests can get a nasal swab test at Downs Hall at Kane University on Mondays and Tuesdays. Dates, hours of operations, locations for all vaccination and testing available can be viewed by residents at ucnj.org/covid19. Union County food distributions continue. Food insecurity remains a real issue among our residents as they face housing and unemployment issues, and I was able to visit the food distribution last week and with a number of commissioners, and about 7:30 in the morning, the traffic was backed up near Route 22, so there's still quite a demand for those efforts. Those efforts today have resulted in Union County distributing over 16 million Those efforts today have resulted in Union County distributing over sixteen million pounds of food to residents, which translate into approximately fourteen million meals. Approximately twenty percent of the county population has benefited from those distributions. Our next distribution will be on Saturday, March 26th, this Saturday, at 11:00 a.m. at Cedar Brook Park in Plainfield. This is a walk-up distribution. Food distributions are open to all county residents. Food will be distributed on a first-come, first-served basis, and no registration is required. Each resident will receive one emergency box of produce, dairy, shelf-stable food, enough that will sustain a family for several days. The county commissioners continue to thank Village Supermarket and Gargulio Produce for their continued partnership in this effort. Lastly, Chair, I would just like to offer just a couple of comments in regard to the budget process. I'd like to commend Director Taylor, all of the department heads, the constitutional officers who presented their budgets, the deputy county manager and county manager Ed Oatman. Also would like to commend our fiscal chair, Granados, who did an excellent job of running those meetings. And in terms of the, you know, the purpose of those hearings, as, you know, was announced that the county tax levy is flat for this year, I thought it was a great opportunity for the commissioners to meet with all of the directors, to hear an overview of the accomplishments from the prior year, as well as to ask frank questions about programs, new programs and old programs. So I think it was time very well spent, and I look forward to introducing a flat budget in a couple of weeks. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Yeah, I have a couple of comments, but first, I want to address a slanderous attack that was made on us by a commenter. I don't want anyone leaving this meeting thinking that the commissioners received upwards of seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. I don't know where that number came from, eighty-three thousand dollars each. We certainly did not get any money above and beyond the salary that we are paid this time for serving. So I just want to make sure everyone understands. You may have seen the mystified looks of all my colleagues when that accusation was made, but there's no way that we received that money. I have no idea where that comment came from, but I just want to reassure you all that it is absolutely not true. Thank you. So my comments have to do with Women's History Month, which we are now sort of heading toward the end of, and I want to remind everyone to come and enjoy a virtual event that we've been hosting for thirty-five years, the Union County Women of Excellence Awards. It's tomorrow, Friday, tomorrow night at 6:30. The Zoom link is available from the Union County Office on Women at ucnj/whm, meaning Women's History Month. As we've done for the past thirty-five years, we will be recognizing outstanding women who lead and who serve in our own Union County community. In that spirit, I do want to draw your attention to some hearings you may have been watching this week for the confirmation, hopefully, of U.S. Supreme Court nominee Judge Katanji Brown Jackson. If she is confirmed, Judge Jackson will become one of just five women to become a justice of the Supreme Court in our nation's history. She will also become the one and only Black woman ever to achieve that title if indeed she is confirmed. If you watched the hearings, you saw a brilliant intellect, very accomplished woman who maintained her composure in the midst of what I would characterize as untoward, unseemly, and frankly ridiculous attacks by some of the members of that committee. I was very moved by Senator Booker's commentary. So, you know, we know that Judge Jackson has inspired already a generation of women and girls. Hopefully, she will not be the last, and, you know, these kinds of barriers will continue to be broken down, and ideally, if she is again confirmed, she will lead the way for many, many years to come. So with that, I want to wish everybody a good rest of your month. We will see you maybe at the St. Patrick's Day Parade, and with that, I will ask for a, oh, any comments? County Council, any comments?
No, thank you, Chair.
Okay, all right. So with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Moved by Commissioner Mirabella, seconded by Vice Chair Hudak. Let's see, is everyone in favor of this?
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned.